And I'm different. I'm getting ready to retire. I want to invest too. You understand what I'm saying? So, I want to have a seat at the table. Because, just like Mr. Eskew was talking about earlier, I'm going to spend my money where I want to. That's my choice. I'm going to invest my money where I want to.
Camden is my hometown, Marvin, you know.
I understand. It's mine too.
And I, you know, want the best for my hometown. I've lived here most of my 60 years. And I've already said it, but I'll remind you that I'm the first local director of the Economic Development Agency in Camden that we've had since its inception.
Do you remember when I recommended you on that?
Yes, I sure did. That's one reason I'm not digging for another actuary.
No, no.
Reminding some people that...
But I did that because we, I went through about four or five directors down there. And, you know, I want somebody with my best interests at heart and my children and my grandchildren. And I haven't seen it.
Well, Marvin, I will tell you this. I believe, at this point in time in Camden's history, we have a lot of opportunities that I'm working on currently. And I think we have the best relationship between a professional Economic Development Agency that you have with Washington Partnership for Economic Development, and the State Economic Development Office. And from the Governor's Office on down, from the Governor to the State Economic Development Office, I have a very good working relationship. We had, the State brought me a prospect last Friday that we entertained and showed them, you know. So, we're getting looks, you know. But I can assure you, if we didn't have a professional and a professionally presented Economic Development Agency like we have in place today, we wouldn't be getting those looks. The State, you know, expects local buy-in from the local community.
Sure.
And they'll write a big check for job creation and expansion. And most of your new jobs and your new positions are not, they don't come from a big fish that we've landed that we've been courting for two or three years. And there's some of those out there.
That's why I'm concerned about retail.
Right. I'm concerned about it too.
Let me ask you something.
Okay.
I would suggest, and this is my only suggestion, that we consider removing the calls that we have to come through City Council in order for you to negotiate. Maybe we should come back here for money. But for negotiation purposes, we need the opportunity to sit at the table and talk about incentives. And we don't have that proper with this present agreement.
I got a question about the incentives. I was going to ask you to play that back. I mean, that's kind of a problem for me. I mean, if, I mean, that's what he's supposed to be doing. I mean, is that something that was drawn up years ago?
Yes. I've been asking about it for years.
And how can we fix it?
We are the ones that do fix it. You guys made that decision to fix it. This is not, this statement is in here on the very first page of the contract that you have.
Yeah, I mean, I'm seeing it, and forgive me, I just got this contract kind of late this evening. I ain't had a chance to just digest it. But what you mentioned, the incentives, you know, that's kind of a problem with me. And we don't need to have hands tied. If we need to break some chains, then we got the power to do it. We can talk about it. Yes, we could.
I want to mention, now, I have two questions about James Lee. Because our resolution that we got, we didn't get until late this afternoon, I think. It says that our contract will be the one similar to the one previously presented. And I'm just wondering if the one that's attached here, if it's the same as we've been using, or if there's parts of it that's changed? What parts have changed? So, I don't know where to type this up.
All right, Mr. Eskew, if that's the contract that I've sent to the Mayor's Office, this is the contract that...
Same as we've been using. Well, like I said, our resolution just says it's similar to it, and I didn't know...
If I may ask, I was able to look at it. Same thing. It's like they just recopyed it and sent it in.
Are you done with Mayor?
Yes, sir. It's a little bit warm up here. Is it warm or are you on a hot plate? Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chief, Fire Department. Robert Metcalfe is going to come with our annual Fire Department report.
This year, I've done things a little differently. I'd like to thank the council again for allowing me to speak to you again this year. But this year, we've done things a little differently. We submitted the report electronically. It was included with your packet that you got by email or mailed to you. Just touch on some high points in the interest of time management. This is, we've had a long meeting so far, so I won't stress you any more than I absolutely have to. My report this year covers seven relevant statistics for the Camden Fire Department. The total request for service, our fire responses, property loss, response time, public education, personnel training, and medical response data. Also in my report, you'll find information about the weather sirens, our Code Red, and some other information that the council may find interesting. This year, our request for service decreased about eight percent. And there are areas where we expect to see, we hope to see, decreases. As our public outreach programs expand, as we do more fire education, we hope to see decreases in our fires in our communities. Our dollars saved versus our dollars lost increased dramatically in 2018. We had more fires this year or this past year that resulted in monetary loss. However, we had more opportunity to save money as well. And as a result, our dollars saved was quite a bit higher than it was last year. This last year, in 2016, we began a building improvement project that you've all been part of. We continued with that project this past year. We replaced some really inefficient lights in some of our stations with high-efficiency LED lighting. That's made a big difference in the guys' ability to work at night out in the engine bay and see what they're doing. It's made it a lot safer. And it looks like it saved a little bit of energy. It didn't save a lot, but every little bit, every little bit adds up. We still look towards trying to renovate Central Fire Station. That building was built in 1967, and it's had no major renovations since that time. So, we still look forward to some renovations in that area. Our staff attended several classes last year. We also sponsored some classes through the Arts of Fire Academy that brought in firefighters from other parts of the state. So, we were real happy to do that and bring in those people to eat at our restaurants and stay in our hotels. We did emergency medical technician training in-house this past year, and that worked out really well. The weather siren situation has stabilized in the past year. As you recall, I came to the council, my first-year's chief, and requested some funding to maintain our weather sirens, money that we've never had before. And that has worked really well in keeping our weather sirens up that are available to be kept up. We had some old sirens that were Civil Defense era sirens that we had to just take down because they were unserviceable and we couldn't get parts for them anymore. We've got some newer digital sirens that we're keeping up. And right now, all the remaining sirens are operational. We didn't respond to any fire fatalities last year, but we did have three that resulted in casualties. One was life-threatening. But I have to brag on our firefighters. They made a good save. They brought somebody out of a burning structure. And that person is still alive today as a result. So, I'm very proud of them for that. In 2018, despite our personnel shortages, we had some tests, good inspections in our stations. We were able to save almost eight percent of our budget, even though we had to do a lot of, had to get rid of a lot of furniture, buy new furniture. We had to do a lot of renovation work to our stations. We were still able to come in almost eight percent under our budget. And we continued to maintain our ISO rating of plus-two, despite our personnel shortages, which is a real testament to the guys. We very rarely had a shift last year where we had more than eight firefighters on shift. But as average, all of our structure fires, all of our calls that involved fires, we had 11 firefighters respond to those structure fires, which puts us right where we need to be to maintain that ISO too. That's in spite of being short-handed all year. If you're following along with me, I'm on total runs. Like I said, they decreased by eight percent. But they're in areas where we expect to see, we hope to see, reduction. Page nine is our fire calls, our fire responses. We responded to 72 calls, which is a little lower, down seven percent from where we were in 2017. But our goal has always been to reduce our fires in the city. And we feel like that's a testament to the work that we've been doing. Page 10, property loss. You noticed that I mentioned that earlier. We had 64 responses that represented a total value of over $6.5 million. We estimate that we lost just under $1 million worth of property. So, that means we saved $5 million worth of property last year, which is outstanding. Irish response time, page 11. You know, we strive to maintain a response in under three minutes. In 2018, we were able to respond on average in two and a half minutes, just over two and a half minutes. So, that's really outstanding, considering where we were at staff-wise all last year. Public education, our numbers are down a little bit there, but we don't see that as a major issue. Our numbers will fluctuate. We work towards improving those all the time. Training activities, I mentioned some of the training opportunities that we had last year. We did rope rescue classes last year. We did building inspection. We do company officer. We do fire service instructor. We do a lot of classes through the year that we're able to get through the state at no cost or little cost to the park. That saves the city a lot of money in those areas. Medical responses, on page 14, were quite a bit. There was a 146% increase in medical responses last year. That's just indicative of where we've been headed the past few years. As our population ages, we find that we're called on more to respond and we continue to do so. The page 15 is a little bit about how we operate. You know, most of the elders understand that we operate on a three-compliment system. Each shift is comprised of nine firefighters if we're fully staffed. We operate out of three fire stations. We have a shift that's commanded by Assistant Chief Nash. A B shift is Assistant Chief Van Nash. And C shift is commanded by Assistant Chief Sharp. They all report for duty at 7:00 AM in the morning, and they work a 24-hour day, ending at 7:00 AM the next morning. These guys are there for a third of their life, from 7:00 in the morning to 7:00 the next morning. During that time that they're there, they'll perform basic shift duties. They'll check trucks. They'll do station maintenance. Each day of the week, we have a different job that needs to be maintained, needs to be done or performed that day. Mondays are lawn maintenance day. We don't have anybody that comes in and mows our grass and takes care of the exterior of our stations. We do all that ourselves. Tuesdays, we do each truck that we have has a day of the week where that truck is washed and fueled and it's inventoried and inspected. So, every day of the week, we'll have something going on with a piece of apparatus. Wednesdays, we do weather siren testing as weather permits. We don't do that on days when it's cloudy or it looks like there may be a threat of storm, because we don't want understandably get everybody upset. But on days when the weather permits, we do do that. We do fire hydrant maintenance. A lot of people think that the water department does that, but we do all the fire hydrant maintenance. We test the hydrants. We lube the stems and the threads, and we even paint the fire hydrants. We actually have a program that works out real well where people and citizens can adopt the fire hydrant and paint it for us. And that's worked out well. We have a lot of citizens that were interested in doing that. We do commercial inspections. And of course, as I said, we maintain a state of readiness 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to respond to any emergency that arises. Last page, page 16, is just another review of our budget. And at this point, like I said, I'm trying to keep it short. I'll entertain any questions, anything specific or anything general that this council may want to get more information on. Feel free to ask at this time.
Yes, sir. Chief?
Yes, sir.
First of all, awesome report. Had an opportunity to read your report to its entirety. In 2018, you guys had an awesome year.
Thank you, sir.
I'll comment you on that. Page six, you mentioned that in 2018, you had like three fires which resulted in casualties, but no deaths.
No deaths, no, sir.
And that's awesome. And so, that speaks volumes of your response time.
Thank you.
On page 14, I got it highlighted about the medical response, how it was up in 2018. Just a question, are those mostly 911 calls, or whenever you went to a fire, you just had to do what you had to do?
Generally, are fire calls that involve medical, they're not logged in as medical calls, they're logged in as fire calls? We get a lot of people that call us on our business line. They need help getting up. They need help getting from the car to their, to the house, from the house to their car. They've got a doctor's appointment. They can't get there. They can't get to their car. So, we do a lot of that.
So, they call you rather than calling an ambulance?
They call us. They call us, and we're happy to serve the public. We feel like they pay for our service, so we're happy to serve.
Well, I mean, with the medical response chart being up, and that's the only one that was counted up.
It was.
But I mean, it's a good thing. It speaks volumes of how you guys take everybody serious and how you're responding to every call.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it.
And I'll say congratulations for your appointment to the board by the Fire Marshal.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sir, no other questions?
I do have one.
All right.
You mentioned the weather sirens?
Yes, sir.
In your reports?
Yes, sir.
And how many of the older ones are broken down and were unable to be repaired? You had mentioned that you had some new digital sirens.
They're newer.
Newer?
Newer. I called them new.
All right.
I called them newer.
Was that enough to replace all the ones that we lost? Or are we still covering the same area?
No, sir. We've lost, one at Palisades in West Washington was an also defense siren we had to remove. And then we have to remove, we still yet have to remove the one at Station 3. It's an old Civil Defense siren. Those are air-operated sirens. They were put there back in the 40s and 50s.
I remember that time. So, are there any plans right now to continue replacing the ones that we can't repair?
Not at this time.
Or is that something that the council needs to?
We've been concentrating on Code Red. We're in a partnership with Washington County. We pay a portion of Code Red expenses. You can go to the city website. You can go to our website, and there's links there that you can follow to sign up. What that does for us is it gives us the ability to isolate certain areas of the city and make a phone call or send a text message to that particular area of the city. That works out well. It doesn't work out so well for some of the older people that are less technologically advanced, so we try to keep those weather sirens up as much as possible for those. I've got a grandmother that's 92 now, and she, every time she hears that weather siren station too, she runs to her friend's home. I want to keep giving her that opportunity.
Exactly.
And I want to keep giving the other members of the community that have grown up and gotten used to that, that opportunity as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, Police Chief, where do you come from? The Fire Annual Police Department report.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council members for this opportunity to present you the 2018 weather. He's going to pull up, I do have a PowerPoint for the 2018 There we go. Okay, so for the 2018 annual report for our crime analysis, we can go ahead and skip to a couple of the first ones, Travis. And we'll go to, the next one is just a table of contents and the message from the chief. We'll pass that. And we're going to go to the slide four, it's our organizational chart. One of the first things that the mayor asked before when we did over his office is our organizational chart. So, this is updated, how we have the chief and our four, our three divisions and how they're broken down. So, each one of you have that in your handouts. The biggest thing everybody wants to know, of course, is our crime analysis statistics, which is on five. So, this year, like every other year, we base our crime on seven different categories of offenses. That includes homicide, robbery, rape, burglary, assault theft, and auto theft. And all these are reported to the FBI on basis, on a monthly basis, to the National Incident-Based Reporting System or with all neighbors. The categories are further divided into either crimes against persons or crimes against property. So, for the crimes against our persons, in 2018, there were zero homicides in the city of Camden, which was consistent with last year. So, that looked great for Camden. Our robberies were down. We had six robberies in the city of Camden last year, which was down from nine in 2017. All nine robberies were 100% cleared by our Criminal Investigations Divisions, and all six individuals arrested. Out of those six robberies, there was a firearm used in three or 50% of those robberies. Over the past four years, there's been a decline in the rapes, with two being reported in 2018, which was down 71% from 2015, where there were seven. So, the rapes have considerably gone down. So, if you look at the chart on the right with crimes against persons, I did that separate with our assaults. There was a little bit of an increase with 60 being recorded in 2018 compared to 51 in 2017. When we start talking about crimes against property, probably one of our biggest crimes in Camden, as I showed you, the crimes against persons, has always has been on a pretty consistent decline. Our crimes against property is also on a decline, but what I would still consider hot. But if you'll notice, there were 28 commercial burglaries reported in 2018, which gave us an increase from the 21 that were reported in 2017. On the residential side of the burglaries, there were 78 burglaries reported in 2018 compared to the 61 in 2017. The thefts had also increased by 7%. We had 172 thefts, which was compared to 159 thefts in 2017. And the automobile thefts were identical. We had 18 vehicles stolen compared to the 18 stolen last year. But out of those 18, we did recover 17 of them. And I want to make one note to City Council that I've expressed to the mayor. All 18 vehicles have keys in the ignition. So, it's almost impossible to steal your car. And this is where the public really has to step up and help us. So, moving to the next slide is Barbara Brown.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
And it was a little different for me when I first went over this with you. And I'm pretty sure they asked, can you explain the difference between the theft and the auto theft?
A theft is just, if you left a lawnmower in your yard, and they went and stole the lawnmower out of your yard, that's just a theft. An auto theft is strictly automobiles, cars.
And see, for a long time, I just, I thought that went with the burglaries, until he explained it.
Burglaries are an occupiable structure. And we consider an occupiable structure, either residential or commercial. So, let's go into the crime stats that our Patrol Division keeps up with, and it's our calls for service. And you'll notice in 2018, we did have a huge spike in calls for service. There was a 31% increase in the calls for service. We had 14,500 compared to last year was 94. And out of those 14,500 calls, 3200 reports were generated off of that into our system. Traffic accidents luckily were down. They went from 336, which from last year was the 574. I don't know if we can contribute that to the sign, but if you've all noticed, we've been placing the speed sign around Camden, so we're starting to see a little bit of a decrease, mainly because of awareness. There were 1,884 traffic citations issued, which is pretty comparable to last year. Physical arrests were comparable. We had 1,073 arrests comparable to 1,052 last year. The warrants, we served 778 warrants in 2018 compared to the 539 we served the previous year. So, out of all those warrants, we did collect right at 13,000 in warrant fees compared to 9,000 the year before. So, we had about 31% increase in warrant fee collections. Escorts have been steadily on a decline since our homicide in 2014. We had a real huge spike, but they have declined now to where we've only had 328 calls for escorts. We'll move on to the domestic violence. In 2018, there were 190 cases of domestic violence in Camden, which is a little bit higher than the year before where we had 179. You'll see it kind of spiked up and it's leveling off. Out of those 190, 158 people were arrested. 107 of these individuals were misdemeanors, and the other 51 were felony. Our domestic violence unit that we have at the Police Department also is tasked with tracking and monitoring all of our registered sex offenders inside the city limits. And it's different from Washington County, they have their own. But inside the city limits, we have 45 registered sex offenders, and we break them down from their lowest level, what we call a one, to the highest of four. So, we have 10 ones, 22 twos, 11 threes, and two of the fours, which is the highest possible you can have. And those are the guys we monitor really, really closely. Our Animal Control Division, 417 dogs were confined at the pound last year. Out of those, 105 were euthanized because of either some type of disease, or they were hit by a car, or too old to be adoptable. So, 105 of those had to be. But we did, we were able to either adopt or reclaim 52% of On our training side, everybody knows how the training is. We strive to keep our training at the Police Department as high and as professional as we can. And we are required by state law to have at least 16 hours documented through CLEST, which is an Arkansas standards organization. Some of the types of trainings we've received this year were the active shooter. We have to qualify with our firearms. We had an narcotics officer program peer-to-peer, social media marketing, emergency preparedness. We had an narcotics officer program peer-to-peer, social media, marketing, emergency preparedness, racial profiling, which is one of the ones that is mandatory by the state that we do have, crisis intervention, all of our crimes against women conferences, Stop the Believe, the diversity workshops. We had an Arkansas metallurgical training, which we sent Captain Voss to a training in Little Rock for a week where he kind of worked side by side with coroners for accidents or deaths and he can, he can help out the coroner on that. And of course, drugging endangered children are Arkansas first children, impaired drivers and all of our dispatchers went through telecommunication. So that's pretty much as far as the law enforcement, what we did is on the law enforcement side. I think everybody knows I'm really pro-community oriented. That's my goal as the chief. So one half of me is really into the law enforcement, the other half is my community. So our next slide is our partnerships that we have with the Camden Police Department with other individuals. Our first one is with the school. I spoke with Mark Keith, the superintendent. We have a full-time SRO officer in the Camden High School and one in the middle school, Monday through Friday, 8:00 to 8:30 while the doors are open. It's a great communication tool for our officers and the kids. They're not there to police as much as they are to stop anything from happening. Another partnership we have is with the Washita County Extension Service. I think Travis has spoken about them highly. Those are a great bunch. They help us with our fishing derby. They coordinate with Arkansas Game and Fish and we drop 1,000 catfish into the pond at the school and we allow children to come out up to the age of 18 and catch these fish and we provide hot dogs. It's great, it's a great event. The other one is our unit in the community. We have a national life hall. It's a pretty big deal. I think we have all of our city services there where they neck in Carne Park and I think they're on their fourth year, fourth or fifth year. Donald might know the number of that to be exact. Five years. It's a great organization and we support them, them holding. Our public relations events, we have increased those over the years to where we're at now. You'll see the list. It is tremendous what the police department does every year with the citizens. We have our Easter egg hunts, we have our Special Olympics, our blood drives, first Friday hayride, dumping booths. We have the swamp riders coming down and do a motorcycle ride where we collect toys for the kids. We handed out, 75 families got gifts from the police department this year. We also deliver to pine hills, nursing home, Long Meadows Nursing Home, the Silver Oaks twice. We do it once for Easter and we do it once for Christmas. And this year, Walmart also coordinated with us and we did a shop with a cop. 30 children were picked, 20 from Camden, five from Harmony Grove, five from Bearden, and each one of those child got a $85 gift certificate to Walmart. And you'll see we had the Arkansas State Police bring their helicopter down and the kids were really, really enjoying that. We also partnered with, we have our scholarship program, the Christmas parade, homecoming parade, death penalty, warrant cell and all those that we typically do every year. The financial side is pretty much flat from what it was, or when I say flat, the same as it was. Our budget in 2018 was pretty comparable to what it was in 17. At the end of the year, you know, I take all the information I can to try to make an information off of that for the next year. In 2018, our overall budget was reduced by about 35,000 from the year before and out of that 35,000 or 2,708, we did have a negative variance of about $20,000. So that's about what we saved out of our 2 million, 2.7 million dollar budget. And a lot of that is contributed because people ask me, you know, how am I saving that much money? And a lot of that I can show, I can tell you is, it's contributed straight to the employees of the Camden Police Department. They watch their fuel consumption. It was down 48% from last year. That means they're not letting their cars sit out there and run, they're not abusing their vehicles as far as fuel and using it when they're not supposed to. They're taking care of their equipment, our operating expenses and our repair and maintenance costs were significantly down. That's how we were able to save the money. So our budget is accountable, transparent, and courageous. The financial responsibility gives all the taxpayer's ability to track how we spend their money. We had two employees this year. One employee of the year was Dana Weatherby for our public relations aspect. She did a tremendous job in coordinating all of our public functions. And Officer of the Year this year was Officer Jacob Van Ash. He's only been with us for a little over a year and did just an outstanding job in such a manner. One slide that I typically put in here was some of our stats on our sworn and non-s sworn, how much they work, how much vacation they take from sick. And you can see, I'll break it down later for you, but overall, their hours were really great when I looked at their overtime and sick time and what the total hours that department worked. So in conclusion, as you've seen in this report again, police departments had another busy 2018. From also responded to a five-year high with 14,500 calls for service. The criminal investigation was involved in 28 different search warrants for drugs, guns, and property. An estimated $500,000 in property was stolen and a partial league, $300,000 was recovered by our criminal investigation division. There were 64 felony drug arrests made and we all know about the opioid epidemic that's going on, which is no different in Camden than anywhere else. Based on the information in this report, I feel that Camden is a safe place to live, but we still have to continue with our property crime rate and we all have to join in to try to help correct this problem. It's going to take everybody on that. Everybody knows, starting in 1970, studies pointed out, were more and more linked to unemployment, poverty, and crime, that there are connections with income level, time spent in school, quality of neighborhoods and education that were revealed as well. Most importantly, what reveals this unmistakable connection between poverty and crime is that they're both geolag-, geolog-
Geographically?
Geographically connected. It's strictly consistent way. Another word you'll find that poverty is also where you find crime in Camden is just that. Continuing to develop in our strong community partnership remains fundamental principles for our success in the work that we do and we'll continue to embrace the community-oriented policing principles as part of this organizational philosophy. Enduring fair and impartial policing will represent in our work by the treatment of people with dignity and respect and being worthy of the trust that this community have placed in us. Recognizing that we in emerging technologies are changing in the way we police this community, members of this police department embrace technology solutions to do our job more efficiently while working to balance the value and importance of human touch in our service. So, and you'll see technology, I stepped up today and gave you all this. So if you have any questions, Mayor, it's not me, happy to answer.
Another question, I got a comment again. Awesome report, great breakdown of all and everything that you're all doing. One of the things I'm stoked about and all that you guys are doing, all the fuck relations that you got going on and each year seeing it go up and up and I think that's good and that's one of the things that's helping with our crime, that you guys are just getting out with the citizens, going to the schools and getting the kids and letting them know that, you know, our police officers are good people and we here to do the right thing. And also I want to commend you guys. You guys left out one thing on your report and that's the active shooter awareness. You guys did a lot of that.
A lot of active shooter.
You come out church and you really helped us out and just want to commend you guys. Good job, you guys.
I'll tell you, I'll, I'll just ask you what you're saying about that relationship. I do think it reduces our crime. In the past years, you know, the crimes happened and we asked people, what happened? Can you come talk to us? It was just, we don't talk to the police. Now that we have started bonding closer and closer, we are getting better communications. We're getting information how we can solve these crimes. You know, the police department can't just, just do it on their own. We have to have this community and this, this relationship has really helped us out tremendously.
Yes, sir.
I got one question on your crime stats. I was curious, it struck me that the calls for service on your, in your traffic went up almost 50%.
Yes, sir.
But none of the incident reports, traffic accidents, I just wonder what all the other calls were that were?
Believe it or not, we, and that could be with our collaboration with the community, that we want everybody to feel that they can call the Camden Police Department, whether it's a cat in the tree and we transfer it to the fire department or if it's a, no matter what the call, we will take it and we will, will count that as a call for service. But like you say, the incident reports were the actual ones that we, we put on paper.
All right, well, I'll have to give my report to be very brief where I have 90. In the first 90 days, I'm supposed to get one, so I'm scheduled, I start with one of Asos' favorite. He said, oh, this may take a while. One day a country man was going to the nest of his goose and he found an egg that was yellow and glitter. And when he took it up, it was heavy, it felt like lead. He was going to throw it away because he thought someone had played a trick on him. But he took it home and he thought again and to his delight, it was an egg made of pure gold. Every morning, the same thing occurred, so he thought, hey, I could become rich if I start selling these eggs. So as he grew rich, he grew more greedy and thinking that once and for all, he would get all the gold he could from this goose. He killed it and opened it and found nothing. My only point is that greed often overreaches itself. First, I want to say thank you to all of you who joined us this evening. Thank you Reverend Manley for the indication. Thank you to our city council members and to the fellow members of our administration. And most importantly, I am grateful for all of the citizens here in the city of Camden for trusting me. Many of you have already heard of our voice platform, vision, which is the ability to think about or plan the future with imagination and wisdom. Opportunity, identifying and analyzing all potential ideas regardless of size and impact. Integrity, fostering a culture of honesty, trust, and ethical behavior. Community, seeking ideas and feedback from all. We only succeed together. Economic development, creating a business development hopper to capture and evaluate all ideas no matter how small. Mayor Andy Burke of Chattanooga, Tennessee said, "Sometimes a state of the city address is an opportunity for celebration, but tonight we weren't because our city's future will be set by those coming together to build community and create opportunity, not by those who are out to destroy." The building of this great community starts right here. It starts right now and it starts with you. I am pleased to share with you just a few of the remarkable accomplishments that have already taken place since January 1 of 2019. Thanks to everyone who has joined our new and re-energized team. Without the support of our officials, enthusiastic volunteers, and each and every employee at the city of Camden, nothing would be possible. Immediately, we started improving the working conditions and environment from addressing rapport to having the building conditions evaluated in order to provide a safe and healthy work environment for our employees, starting right here with our municipal building. I made it a number one priority to begin working closely with public works department and addressing some of our major street issues. We also created and implemented a city of Camden transition team and we established a partnership with SAU Tech and Arkansas Environmental Academy. We re-engage the city of Camden's partnership with the local Department of Workforce Services and SAU Tech's adult education program in order to receive and develop training based upon our city's needs. We've also partnered with Judge McAdoo in many areas, but one of the other most, of the other most important would be the partnership in regards-